Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Organizational Meeting for Tuesday, October 31st, 2023. I'll start off with a roll call. Counsel Carlson. Oh, okay. Counsel Croson.
I'm here, thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Dodek. Counselor Palladino.
Present.
Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope.
I'm actually a Gog.
Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Present.
Present.
Mayor Hagan.
Present.
All members are present and quorum's established.
All right. The acknowledgment statement. The city of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people in Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The city of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta Region III. I have a resolution here from Deputy Mayor, and it is, reads the following, that the agenda of the organizational meeting of City Council on October 31st, 2023 be adopted as presenting, presented Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Are there any?
Is the event.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right, call for the vote. Question's been called, all in favor. Pass, thank you. And from Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope, provision to 2023 council and standing policy committee calendar, be resolved that City Council amend the 2023 council and standing policy committee calendar by deleting the following standing policy committee meetings: November 1st, 2023 Audit Standing Policy Committee; November 2nd, 2023 Civic Work Standing Policy Committee; November 9th, 2023 Community Safety Standing Policy Committee; and December 14th, 2023 Community Safety Standing Policy Committee. And further be resolved that the council calendar names for the standing policy committees change effective November 1st, 2023 in accordance with the procedure bylaw. Civic Work Standing Policy Committee to Assets and Infrastructure Standing Policy Committee; and Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee to Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee; Economic Standing Policy Committee to Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee; and Audit Standing Policy Committee and Governance Standing Policy Committee to remain the same. And further be resolved that a Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee meeting be established for December 14th, 2023. And further be resolved that the Priorities and Agenda Review Committee meetings be changed as follow: November 6th, 2023 to November 7th, 2023; November 20th, 2023 to November 21st, 2023; and December 4th, 2023 to December 5th, 2023, all to start at 10:30 a.m. Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope.
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple of questions for the city clerk. In regards to the December the 14th, is that the earliest opportunity for the Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee meeting to be established and to meet under the new constitution? And by constitution, I mean not only the direction but also the personnel.
So we did have a meeting scheduled in November, but there was, what's happening with that is, if you remember November, first they're combining the two committees, so they're combined into one meeting, and so there is a meeting, so we scheduled a meeting for November, and there's also one in December.
Right. The meeting in November, is that one that members of the committee are able to make or not able to make?
We haven't, this calendar was adopted last October, so if there are changes or if there are concerns with quorum, then we would deal with that.
Okay. Other than that, the dates that are identified in here, were clear on those dates?
Correct.
Those are the appropriate ones?
Yeah, they conform with our amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Good. Anything else in regards to the information that's contained in this motion?
No, it's just again to conform with our new procedure bylaw.
Good. Any other questions from members of council?
I see none.
Okay.
I see none in the queue.
We'll call a question then.
Questions been called, all in favor, and that's unanimous. Thank you. And Resolution 4.2, moved by Counsel Croson, amendments to committee's terms of reference. Whereas City Council has amended the procedure bylaw to establish new standing policy committees, be it resolved that the terms of reference for the following committees be amended to include the sentence, "In the event that, in the event the committee is required to report to council, the committee will report to the appropriate standing policy committee depending on the nature of the matter." So Animal Welfare Committee, Heart of Our City Committee, Historic Places Advisory Committee, Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, Youth Advisory Council. And further be resolved that any references to any specific standing policy committees in the terms of references for the above committees be deleted. Counsel Croson.
So this is being done because in the past, we did have them assigned to specific ones, but sometimes it didn't seem appropriate because if Animal Welfare was talking about their terms of reference, then probably better at Governance, if they were talking Finance, it's better at Economic. So what we've now done is it'll be up to that committee and the staff who liaises with them to decide which is the best SPC to send them to, so that the issue can be most appropriately discussed at the correct SPC, and that is what this motion and amendment is effectively doing.
Thank you. So is there any questions? I see no questions from my colleagues.
Oh.
Questions been called, all in favor, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Bylaw. All right, I do have, we'll move on to bylaws, and moved by Counsel Dodek, bylaw 6429, and bylaw to rescind, bylaw 6374, Electoral Ward Boundary Commission bylaw 5.1.1. For a first reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6429, a bylaw to rescind, bylaw 6374 Electoral Ward Boundary Commission bylaw be given first reading. Counsel Dodek. Questions been called, all in favor. So moves, and for a second reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6429, a bylaw to rescind, bylaw 6374, Electoral Ward Boundary Commission bylaw be given second reading. Counsel Dodek.
Yeah, in the package, there's excerpt from Minnetonka City Council held December 13, 2022, but in a nutshell, initially, we were considering going down the route of a formalized ward system, and initially, we had directed a bylaw to be prepared, but then there was a, basically a reconsideration, not as determined as used in the procedure bylaw, but there was a decision not to proceed with the bylaw or the ward system and to clean this up and to be in accord with the resolution that the council had previously made. We have to rescind the bylaw that we had initially directed be prepared, which was prepared.
I do see there are questions. Counsel Croson.
For debate.
In for debate, all right. Counsel Schmidt-Rempel.
In for debate as well.
Debate, all right, and Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope, debate as well. All right. I see no questions in the queue, so we'll go back. Counsel Croson for, oh, sorry, to open debate. Counsel Dodek.
I'll save it for closing.
All right, so Counsel Croson, debate.
I will, of course, be voting against this. I am a firm supporter of going with what the public has asked us to do, which was to look into the ward system. It's interesting because there are certain things like the ward system, which I know I've mentioned having discussed since 1909 in Lethbridge, when we're looking provincially and nationally, things like proportional representation, which we've seen are things that are very effective in getting more people involved in developing political systems, but the only people who can bring them in are the people who are elected under an old system, and they never seem to move ahead, even though, you know, the community has asked us to review into this. So I will not be voting in favor of rescinding this, and I do hope that anybody who really, truly wants the ward system remembers the election in two years, when they can bring it up and ask people about it again.
All right. Counsel Schmidt-Rempel.
There we go. Thank you to the mover for, again, bringing this forward. I will also remain consistent and not be supporting this rescindment motion. Bylaw 6374 was to establish an Electoral Ward Boundary Commission to examine, analyze, and engage stakeholders to produce a final report on the use of a ward system to be submitted to council, and 55.69% of voters said yes to this. I will continue to support and respect those voters in this request. Thank you.
Counsel Parker.
Thank you very much. I really liked the original, when there was commonest compromise, which Counsel, I'm thinking you're Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope brought forward, Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope, because that was kind of the compromise in regards to representation, and I thought there was, there was quite a bit of excitement about that because it addressed the questions that were asked during the election. And over the last few years, regarding different forms of representation, I know that you've done a lot of work in working with, bringing some kind of, not so much schematic, but a draft of what could occur. And so I'm disappointed that that's not going forward, but I'm optimistic that we can still make this happen. So for that reason, if this is, I do believe this does get rescinded, we can still visit that. Am I correct on that?
No.
No.
With a unanimous.
Okay. Okay, perfect. That's all I had to say right now. Thank you.
And if I could just ask for clarification to our city administration, if this is defeated and, and it's rescinded, sorry, if it is actually approved, which means it is rescinded, could this, any member of council could not bring forward a, a motion to look further into precinct model, some of the other things that we've discussed? I thought that was the case.
I would look to city clerks for that answer.
So there was a resolution earlier this year that council direct administration not to proceed with the Ward Boundary Commission, and second, that they direct that this bylaw be rescinded. So we stopped with the recruitment and selection for the ward commission, and the second step was to rescind this bylaw, which is in front of you today. So if you were to not pass this rescindment of the original bylaw, I don't believe there would be any direction change.
So if it is rescinded, we could bring it back in another form then, is what you're saying?
I am not saying, I'm saying no. Either way, no, not in this, not in this term. To, if you, because you've rescinded a motion already, without getting terribly technical, to rescind a rescindment, which makes a lot of sense, I'm sure, to most of you, what it would require in our procedure bylaw is requires unanimous consent, because it can't be dealt with in the same term. Okay, so for clarifying, if this, hearing what I have now, I would, I would be in favor of actually putting this off. I would, I'd like to, kind of recess, or what's the best way, Mr. City Clerk, to, so if I've given reading, first reading to rescind this bylaw, you could take no direction or defeat motion for second and nothing happens. Either way, I believe, I'm not sure what would be, value there would be in a recess.
Is anyone else for clarification, or are we just in for debate? Because clarification? Acting, Acting Mayor? Okay, so Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope, next.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I'll see the floor.
My colleague, she has indicated that she's prepared to provide some clarification. I think clarification would be needed.
So if you will recall, Mayor Hagan, this is the same conversation we had about the integrity commissioner. In our bylaw, you cannot rescind a rescindment within the same term. That's in our own procedure bylaw. And so there are two options that the city clerk's department gave us when we tried that. We have put in, and again, loophole isn't the right word for it, but we have put into our procedure bylaw, that because it's our own bylaw, we can take any part of it that is just bylaw, not a law, and with 100% approval by council, not confirmed to that. So we can, we could do it that way if everybody agreed. The other thing that we talked about under the integrity commissioner, if this was rescinded and somebody didn't like, wanted to rescind the rescindment, it could, we could bring it forward and show that the motion we made was inappropriate, and those would be the only two options, or else we cannot reconsider this within this term.
It almost muddied a little bit more, but thank you for attempting that, Counsel Parker.
I just want to make sure I got this clarified. Counsel Milton-Hope brought something that was kind of a hybrid, something of a compromise, so that's something separate. This one, if this one is rescinded, we could still, you could still bring your proposal forward. Am I correct or not?
From what we've heard, I thought that is the case, but it's my understanding that even though it is different.
Again, it would be a case if it's just different enough.
I mean, it's completely different from what I've.
It is completely different, so we'll face that, we'll face that later on. Okay, thank you.
Any more clarification? Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope, did you have?
No, just still in for debate then.
Debate? All right.
So can I provide any clarification?
Yeah, for clarifica, yeah.
Please. Okay, so I just, the motion that the Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope brought forth was to go to a different sort of model, and what council did with that is just received its information. So that's where it stands. So that's separate than the bylaw and the ward commission boundary that you're, that is in front of you today.
Okay, so with this, with this being rescinded, we just still move forward with that because it is very different.
But it'd be brought forward.
But it'd be brought forward from, from a council at a future date. But within this term, it could be.
Correct, because you didn't actually deal, well, you just said provide for information.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just for final clarification, so, just so I, because I want to make sure I know I'm voting on, so however the vote goes, the, the question of a ward system does not die here today. Is that correct?
Oh, it does.
It does.
It's dead anyways.
It's already dead.
This is cleanup.
Okay, I just need.
Okay, I'll explain it to debate.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
So we're fine for questions and clarification, and it sounds like we may get some in debate, some clarification. All right, and, and I'm okay, I'll entertain questions still if we're, if we're not sure even going through debate. So if you do have a question, feel free, we will get that. Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope to, or who's, who's, sorry, it's Counsel Dodek to open debate, but you've now decided to pass it on? All right, and then we went into questions.
Counsel Croson.
Acting Mayor Middleton-Hope.
Holy crow. All right, so in regards to the debate, so what's before us is to rescind the Electoral Ward Boundary Commission bylaw. My concern is that this will, as, as my colleague has indicated, this will actually just clean up information that we've, or a motion that we've already put forward. This does not preclude us from reintroducing the discussion around a model, whatever that model might look like, in regards to an electoral boundary change or an electoral boundary augmentation. Is that correct? So all we're voting on today is to rescind and to clean up what we've done with the ward commission. We still have the opportunity, to be clear, we still have the opportunity to bring additional information back that would allow this body to evaluate a different model of electing council members and/or mayor in this city. Is that correct?
It is. If you look at the excerpt from the minutes, in the last two paragraphs, it talks about that. You have, at that time, you were referring to as a Maiden-Lethbridge model, and, and that is something that was received as information. So if you're talking about that Maiden-Lethbridge model or some variation of it, that has not died. That was received as information. This, in the minutes show it, that by a vote of seven, or seven to two, the council rescind its previous decision. So we already did that on June 7th, 2022, and then to rescind this particular bylaw. So at that time, in December 13th, 2022, the option of the Maiden-Lethbridge was not dealt with, other than that it had been presented, and we know that it's still alive in terms of, as information. What we're doing today is giving effect to the seven to two vote that we had on December 13th, 2022.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Because I've, I've just received clarification, what we're voting on today, I can, I can live with that, rescinding this, because we still, I want to honor the wishes of the people that elected, that elected us about their desire for a ward system that's still alive, as far as I can see, in a, whatever form that may be. So in that, in that instance, I will support the by, this resolution.
Anyone else for debate? If not, back to close. Counsel Dodek.
I just want to address the reference to the questions that were put to the electorate during the last election. There were two questions put. One was a third river crossing, which was, as I think Counselor Carlson has said, a lot of people are going to say, well, do you want a brand-new car? Would you like a unicorn in your Christmas stocking? Or things of that nature, without putting a cost element to it, you're going to get the response we did. So it was like 75, 25 in favor of, of the third river crossing. With the ward system, even though there wasn't a lot of information on it, there still is a cost associated with it, and there's no guarantee that it was something that would be successful. And I gave the example at that time about what happened with Red Deer, who were given information in advance of the question being put to them in their election, and it was 75 or 25 or thereabouts opposing the ward system, because there is no studies out there saying that it's going to increase participation or anything like that. So the, the fact that 55, 45, the citizens said yes to the ward system, that should not be taken as meaning that you're denying them the opportunity to be heard on the issue, especially when the other Maiden-Lethbridge option is still alive. So this really is just to clean up what we already made a decision on. Like I said, it was a seven to two vote says, bring this bylaw back to rescind the bylaw, and that's what this is. And I would ask for council support. Well, at least seven of them. Or six.
All right. With that, we have no further in the queue. Obviously, you closed debates, so we'll call for the vote on the second reading. All in favor? And those opposed?
Looks similar.
All right, now to proceed, which I can see what's happening here. To proceed with a third reading, we would need unanimous consent. All those in favor of, of proceeding with third reading, all in favor?
Process question, go ahead.
The next regular meeting anyways, right?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it'll go in two weeks.
Which is immediately after this, right?
Um, no. I think it was for the next.
No, but I mean, we have a regular meeting right after this, so we could delay it five minutes.
Yeah.
So.
All right, unanimous support then. We'd, we'd have to add it to the agenda, but other than that, so support for, consider third reading? All right, okay, that's unanimous. All right. So now we'll proceed with third reading. Be it resolved that bylaw 6429 and bylaw to rescind, bylaw 6374 Electoral Ward Boundary Commission bylaw be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counsel Dodek.
Call the question.
Questions been called, all in favor? Those opposed? All right. Now, Kerry, thank you. All right. I do have a resolution from Counsel Croson. This is a resolution which we all have to be in attendance, and I see that we are all here. So 2024 City Council and Standing Policy Committee Calendar, be it resolved that City Council approve the 2024, I know this is 2023, we're going to change that, 2024 City Council and Standing Policy Committee Calendar as in Attachment 1, which was in our package. So with that, Counsel Croson. First off, is there any questions? I do have questions. Counsel Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Through you, I'm assuming, I'll go to city manager or his designate, I'm assuming it'll be city clerks. In next November, traditionally, not traditionally, but recently, we've done a sort of a budget update, budget relook, I can't even remember what we call it, but it's scheduled for this coming November, and I don't see anything in the calendar for next November. Is it every other year we do that, or should there be something put in place?
To members of council and Counsel Carlson, so, yes, that's a good catch inside of there. So there, every, so I'm going to backtrack a little bit here. On August 24th of 2021, City Council made a resolution that annual budget reviews will be done on year two, three, well, yours, basically, every year but the budget cycle. It's probably easier way to say that. So all intents and purposes, in that November period, there usually will, you know, like similar to this year, where we have the morning of the 14th and all day the 15th, the morning of the 16th for economic SPC. I would think that we'll have to work with City Clerk's office to add those, those dates there, which will be the similar procedure each year.
Thank you. And I'd appreciate that, just, it's, it's easier for those of us who have outside commitments to plan ahead if we're going to have to take a week off work at that point. So the sooner we can get those dates solidified, the better. Thank you for that.
Counsel Croson, are you in for opening debate?
Yes, and all I was going to mention is that we have to set this annually, but it's not always set in stone, and it can change as meetings are canceled or added, which of course Counsel Carlson's question illustrated one that we already know that we need to add, or a series that we need to add. But this does have to be done annually, and it does have to have all members of council here to approve. And as we know, that this is a working document, but it gives both ourselves, administration, and the community a sense of the meetings that we are intending to have next year, knowing, of course, that things can change, there can be special meetings and changes. But I hope my colleagues will support this so that we can start planning ahead for 2024.
All right, with that, and the change to 2024, I see no further questions or debates. Questions been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, by Counsel Palladino, administrative appointments to boards, commissions, and committees of council and external committees. 7.1, be resolved that City Council appoint the following members of administration to the following committees for a one-year term effective January 1st, 2024. Councils, boards, commissions, and committees, Travis Grindle to the Combative Sports Commission. And for external committees, Darwin Jewell to the Corvair Ray Link Pathway Committee, and Doug Cow to the Old Man Watershed Council. And further be resolved that City Council direct the members of administration appointed to report to council through the standing policy committees at least annually. Counsel Palladino, or I'll open it up for questions first. Are there any questions? I didn't see any in the queue. Seeing none?
Call the question.
Question has been called, all in favor? And that is approved. Thank you. And that is approved, thank you. I do have a resolution from Acting Mayor Middleton Hope, council member appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Be it resolved that City Council approve council member appointments to internal and external boards, commissions and committees for a term commencing immediately and ending on October 22, 2024 as follows. Mayor Blaine Higgin, Green Acres Foundation, Deputy Mayor Mark Campbell, Assets and Infrastructure Standing Policy Committee, Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee and Highway 3 Twinning Development Association, Counselor Jeff Carlson, Assets and Infrastructure Standing Policy Committee, Audit Standing Policy Committee and Green Acres Foundation, Counselor Belinda Croson, Audit Standing Policy Committee, Governance Standing Policy Committee, Intermunicipal Committee, City and County of Lethbridge, Joint Committee, City of Lethbridge and Lethbridge School Boards. Counselor Rayco Dodik, Audit Standing Policy Committee, Governance Standing Policy Committee and Lethbridge Housing Authority. Acting Mayor John Middleton Hope, Governance Standing Policy Committee, Intermunicipal Committee, that's City and County of Lethbridge, Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee. Counselor Nick Palladino, Audit Standing Policy Committee, Assets and Infrastructure Standing Policy Committee and Intermunicipal Committee for City and County of Lethbridge. Counselor Ryan Parker, Assets and Infrastructure Standing Policy Committee, Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee, Green Acres Foundation and Joint Committee of the City of Lethbridge and City Lethbridge School Boards. Counselor Schmidt Rempel, Safety and Social Standing Policy Committee and Governance Standing Policy Committee. Further be resolved that City Council approve council members' appointments on the Lethbridge Police Commission for a term commencing immediately and ending at the 2025 City Council Organizational Meeting as follows. Counselor Jen Schmidt Rempel and Counselor Nick Palladino. And further be resolved that Council direct the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents and attachments with regards to council appointments to boards, commissions and committees remain confidential pursuant to Section 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Open for questions, I see there's no questions. Acting Mayor Middleton Hope to open debate.
Nothing for debate.
And if there's none for debate, the question's been called.
Call a question.
All in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. And from Counselor Parker, ratification of organizational representatives to boards, commissions and committees, 8.2. Be resolved that City Council ratify the following organizational representatives on their respective boards, commissions and committees for terms beginning on January 1, 2024. Kim Grassmeyer, Nokil Animal Association, NOCA, NOCA representative on the Animal Welfare Committee for a three-year term expiring on December 31, 2026. Number two, Tammy Bellinger, Windy City Canine Rescue, Windy City Canine Rescue Representative on the Animal Welfare Committee for a two-year term expiring on December 31, 2025. Barbara Grodzicki from the Lethbridge Humane Society, or Lethbridge Humane Society, Lethbridge Humane Society Representative on the Animal Welfare Committee for a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Jenna McKenzie, Executive Director for Allied Art Councils, Allied Art Council, Allied Arts Council's Representative of the Heart of the City Committee for a three-year term expiring on December 31, 2026. Anastasia Sareda, Executive Director for Southern Alberta Ethnic Association, Southern Alberta Ethnic Association Representative on the Heart of the City Committee for a one-year term expiring on December 31, 2024. Marnie Hope, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Member, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring on December 31, 2026. Roger Prairie Chicken, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Member, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Left, on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for a two-year term expiring on December 31, 2025. Sylvia Harris, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Member, Lethbridge Indigenous Sharing Network Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring on December 31, 2026. Joel Tailfeathers, Coordinator of Indigenous Education, Lethbridge School District Number 51, Lethbridge School District Number 51, Representative on the Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Rachel Preston, Vice President External, University of Lethbridge Students Union, University of Lethbridge Student Union Representative on the Youth Advisory Council for a one-year term expiring on December 31, 2024. Francine Shulumba, Grade 12 student for Catholic Central High School, Holy Spirit Catholic School Division Representative on the Youth Advisory Council for a one-year term expiring on December 31, 2024. Daniella Estrella Fonte, Grade 12 student at Catholic Central High, Holy Spirit Catholic Central Division Representative on the Youth Advisory Council for a one-year term expiring December 31, 2024. Further be resolved that all departing organizational representatives be thanked with a letter from the mayor on behalf of the City Council for their contribution and asked to complete the departing members survey. And further be resolved that City Council direct the closed session reports, documents and discussions pertaining to ratification of organizational, organizational representatives of boards, commissions and committees, 2024, remain confidential as per Section 17 Harmful to Personal Privacy, Section 19 Confidential Evaluations and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good job reading those. Some of those are a little bit tongue twister, so you did a very good job. First of all, I want to thank the people that have put their name forward to be on these committees and boards. It's greatly appreciated, a lot of time and effort, it goes into volunteering and serving on this committee. And I also want to thank the people who are leaving these boards and commissions. They've done an excellent job in representing their community and volunteering. So I want to make sure that, I want to make a note that, just to thank those people that are leaving these committees and boards as well. Otherwise, Mr. Mayor, I would just call the question.
I see no further questions or debate. Question's been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. And from Counselor Croson, or sorry, Counselor Carlson, just had to throw a curve at you there, Counselor Croson. Public members' appointments to boards, commissions and committees, 8.3. Be resolved that City Council appoint the following public members to serve on their boards, commissions and committees as outlined below for the following terms effective January 1, 2024. The Animal Welfare Committee, Shelby Gibson, three-year term expiring December 31, 2026, a reappointment. Shannon Jarvie, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Charlotte Walters, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Assessment Review Board, Kieran McCormack, three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Gotham Boyala, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Allison Keith, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Lethbridge Combative Sports Commission, Chris Dodelka, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Justin Penny, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Sir Alexander Galt Museum and Archives Board of Directors, Gerald Hebert, three-year term expiring December 31, 2026 as a reappointment. Drew Gillespie, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Laura Braner, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Hannah Ferguson, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Karen Vasant Nigand Nigwani, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Heart of our City Committee, Keltie Baird, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025, reappointment. Dalen Smolensky, a two-year term as the development industry expiring December 31, 2025, reappointment. Shelby Collier, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Jesse Shay Ellis Toddington, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Michael Abapiaka, a two-year term as the Indigenous Community Member expiring December 31, 2025. Historic Places Advisory Committee. Stephen Depish, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026, a reappointment. Star-Cropped Earwolf, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Lethbridge School Board, Craig Brown, a one-year. Lethbridge School, yeah, let's not do a school board, we won't appoint those right now, that would be, thank you for that. Lethbridge Library Board, we won't appoint the school board quite yet, funny, phone hasn't started ringing. Lethbridge Library Board, Craig Brown, a one-year term expiring December 31, 2024, a reappointment. Angela Viola, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026, a reappointment. Cassandra Tate, a three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Keith Gardner, three-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Tamara Mackey, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. And Shandy Blaken, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025. And for Youth Advisory Council, Akshara Nagaruru, a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025, a reappointment. And thank all members with a letter from the mayor on behalf of council, whose terms are expiring, who have resigned from their position for the service and be asked to complete the departing members survey. And further be resolved that City Council direct the closed session reports, documents and discussions pertaining to the public member appointments to the 2023 Boards, Commissions and Committees remain confidential as per Section 17 Harmful to Personal Privacy, Section 19 Confidential Evaluations and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And I do want to make sure that I reach out after reading all these different names through, through the appointments, my apologies if I did not get your name correct, but I, I'm hoping that we made, we made it through. So thank you very much for your patience as we went through all of those. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you haven't gotten my name correct in this meeting either. And I, Carl Rose, Rose. Anyways, I do want to apologize to my colleagues for my phone going off. The last time it happened was in October of 2007, and so I, I broke my 16-year streak of forgetting to, not forgetting to put my phone off. Anyways, I would like to thank all the members of our community that brought their names forward for these positions. I know that our city clerk's department and communications, probably many different departments have helped, but I think led by city clerk's department did an excellent job of recruiting in our community and bringing awareness forward. I think we used even more outlets and platforms than we ever have before. We had a surfeit of riches in the, the interviews. And so my apologies to anyone who isn't getting appointed this time, please resubmit your name. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for the interviews as well as the, the board chairs that sat in on those interviews and brought forward these names for our consideration today. Unless there's anything further from my colleagues or any questions, I will call for the vote.
So questions, so, oh.
I was just getting my hat ready.
Okay, always just kidding, I was going to say you're not in the queue. All right, with that, question's been called, all in favor? And that is unanimous, thank you. Now we will adjourn the organizational meeting, and we will start the council meeting in about five minutes. So at, we'll see at 2:20 we'll be at the council meeting, so seven minutes.